What's that there is that?
All right, we good.
I don't need it up there, just run back.
Make sure it's up there.
Yep, so there was. Okay, good evening and welcome to the open agenda meeting, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, we met in executive session to discuss any personnel potential litigation items and issues. Please rise for the pledge of flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Donato.
Here.
Here. Mr. Governor.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Wolfman.
Here.
Mr. Tablissick.
Here.
Mr. Keller. Mr. Profian.
Here.
Mrs. Wright. Mr. Mark Holzman.
Here. A presentation by Nutrition Inc. Step up.
Good evening, my name is Nathan Manfredo, I'm one of the directors here from McKees Board with the Nutrition Group. After our last presentation in February, we had a lot of parents and community members reach out to us, expressing that they were very interested in what we were doing, there was a lot more activity on our social media pages. So a lot more parents were engaging and they continued to want to know what was coming in the upcoming months for special events and what other special foods that they were going to be getting and what more we were offering. So a couple pictures of events that we had from February. We had our ice cream party at Twin Rivers for students with an attendance average well enough to receive the ice cream party. This was during Love Yourself Week, so we did it with Valentine's Day sprinkles. All the students were extremely happy that they were able to choose between strawberry, chocolate, caramel, any of the toppings, and it was Hershey's Ice Cream. So all the kids knew the brand, they knew everything and it was very nice for them to celebrate their attendance. We did strawberry shortcake across all of the schools as well for Valentine's Day. So it was a way for students to meet their fruit component, but also have a little sweet treat during their lunchtime as well. So all students were able to get fresh strawberries during Valentine's Day with their lunch. We did the sushi day at the high school as we spoke about. We had a lot of students asking us if we're doing it again in the past couple weeks because now they realized what it was and they're looking forward to happening again. So more than likely before the end of the school year, we'll be doing it again for those students that missed out or want to try it again for a second time. And then on Valentine's Day at the elementary schools, we did fresh break cinnamon rolls as well. So we bake them fresh in the morning and then we hand dip them in either pink or red icing with a little bit of Valentine's Day sprinkles on top as well. So that was their free breakfast that they were able to grab for the elementary students. And a lot of them, I would say, that's probably the most we've ever seen them eat at breakfast from what they take. Every time I go up to the elementaries now, there's one student at Twin Rivers, she gives me a hug every time she comes up and asks me when the next time she's having cinnamon rolls is. So we're just getting the reaction from the students, they're asking for these things again, so that's what we like to get is the feedback to then provide more upcoming. On the next slide, we also did a Super Bowl wing bar at the high school. So students could choose from between four different flavors, there was garlic parm, buffalo barbecue, and a lemon pepper. So there were fresh tossed wings, we were there with mixing bowls. And a lot of students, they came up to us and they said they had never seen it before because we were tossing the wings in the sauce there. So it wasn't pre-sauce, we were getting them scratch made for the students. We had more game day favorites with chicken sandwiches, burgers, fries. So it was a nice football themed event before they went on their break for the Super Bowl weekend. And then our last of the pictures, we had a staff luncheon at Founder's Hall where Nurse Kelly wanted to have something from one of the committees and she asked for a lighter, healthier option for the staff to eat during their day. So we like to provide a little bit more fresh fruits and vegetables. And then we also did mini sliders with homemade chicken salad and other items as well. And the staff was very appreciative of all the fresh options vegetable wise and fruits as well because some of the stuff they said they haven't seen in a very long time, such as black figs. A lot of people didn't know what they were, but they tried it and they really enjoyed it and didn't realize that now they can pick it up at Aldi and also go shopping for the same ingredients. On the next slide is where our participation was for February. So we had a little change, we also had the two hour delay for weather and then the two hour delay for for the staff training in the morning as well. So normally when we see two hour delays, there is no breakfast served for those days. And then we also usually see a decline in lunch on those days as well, just with attendance not being as high on two hour delays. Our à la carte did really well last month because we also started selling à la carte at Francis McLaur. So students were able to buy snacks such as hot Cheetos for roll ups, they were very excited about that. And Founder's Hall, we continued adding on to our menu down there for more reimbursable, smart snack compliant snacks. The image on the left is a picture of what a full reimbursable meal looks like. So a lot of the parents were reaching out saying, I didn't realize you guys offer as much as you do because my kid is saying they're only eating a piece of pizza and a milk. And they're taking maybe a juice, pizza pizza and apple juice, and that does count as a meal. But this is the full option that they could choose, so those are Bosco sticks. They're basically a breadstick stuffed with cheese with a little bit of garlic and fresh Parmesan on top. And they have a nice little side Caesar salad, Mandarin oranges, and a fruit punch. So we just like to show the extent of what the students can choose and all the fresh greenery that they're seeing as well in the cafeterias.
Nathan, not to interrupt you, but I ate a couple of these cheese sticks over at Duquesne today.
Yeah, so the Bosco sticks are a new product this year in our cafeterias. And honestly, ever since we put them on the menu, that is what the students look forward to. So I think we have them almost at least once a week just because, especially the elementary level, a cheese stick is probably something that they just want every single time they go in, they dip it with the marinara and it's a new fan favorite, so I don't see it leaving the menu anytime soon at any of the schools. The next page is a little bit of information from our company on the tasty bite program. So this is just how we incorporate those sweet treats into those free reimbursable lunches that the students are looking forward to. So there, some of them are based around the time of year that we have them and some of them are just anytime throughout the year. So we like to introduce these, the cookies that you see on the screen are whole grain cookies. So that means meets their grain component for their lunches. Same with the apples, that meets their fruit. So each of these has a sweet note, but also meets their components that the government is looking for in their reimbursable meals. This week is also school breakfast week, so on the next slide, there's a little bit of information about National School Breakfast Week. So we're doing a little bit at the elementary schools, there's some different signage up, some different offerings, some more scratch made stuff as we spoke about. Just to highlight the importance of breakfast and the importance of getting a fresh start to your school day by eating those grains in the cafeteria. So we're up there, like I said, there's probably a handful of students at either school that now know who we are just by being there for breakfast. And they come up to us and they're in the hallway and they say, what's for breakfast this morning? So we're able to tell them what it is, take them in there. And they just look forward to it every day because they've started to realize the staff and it's become part of their routine. The next slide is part of our professional development. This is our supervisor, Kelly Valmasone, our regional manager, she participated in a training. This is where all the regional managers just get together and they meet with the corporate office to go over more budgeting for the future school year and stuff that she will then bring to us to improve all of the stuff here, so just more continuing education that our company is doing with our supervisors as well. The next page is part of something that I've also been working on. So I work on part of the chef committee with our company, so I work with our corporate chef in designing new recipes for the students in all of our accounts. So McKees Board is fortunate enough to use some special ingredients that we can test on the students here and get their feedback for next school year and some products coming in. One thing that I'm super excited about is next school year, we're expanding into our international cuisines. So we're bringing this to the secondary and elementary, we're expanding into ramen, we've tested some tikka masala sauces and some more international Asian, South American foods that you'll see in the upcoming future in our cafeterias. So just something that we're really proud and once we decide on a final list of recipes and ingredients, you can expect to see those next school year once they've hit the menus. And then the last slide is just our list of events. This is not all the events that we have coming up this school year, but we always like to invite any of the board members and any of the staff to come down and see all of the events that we have coming up. So we'll be having pie day at the high school, so we'd be doing specialty pizzas, maybe some dessert pizzas you'll see as well, just to celebrate pie day on March fourteenth. That's also our green day for all of our schools, so our little bit St. Patrick's Day themed. One of the fan favorites is green applesauce. It's very simple, but the kids seem to love it because they get gold sprinkles on it every year as well, so that's another fan favorite is Green Day. We'll have spring cookies, so those tasty bites that I talked about earlier is what we're doing at the elementary schools for the first day of spring. So all the students with their meal will have the option to take a whole grain cookie. And it'll be part of the reimbursable meal as part of their grain component rather than a slice of bread or some noodles. And then the final one is we're doing a made to order potato bar at the high school on the twenty-eighth. So students really love the customization within the cafeterias. They like to see a whole bar and they'll have french fries, tater tots, baked potatoes, for example, and then a wide variety of toppings such as broccoli, cheddar, buffalo chicken, barbecue chicken. They can basically choose what they want for their meal based off all of our options. So we always extend an invitation to all the board members and everyone to come visit for some special events and see the new food that's coming to the cafeterias.
Wait a second, Nathan. Did we send you away with scholarship money a few years ago?
Yes, sir.
You went on to New York.
That is correct, yeah, I went to New York.
Did you go to a New York?
I went to the Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park.
It's like the biggest one in the United States.
Yes, sir.
It's most formidable. And you completed your education there?
Yeah, I graduated from culinary school in two thousand and twenty-three.
And you decided to come back to McKees Board?
Yes, sir.
Do any of you know the institute that he's talking about, it's like the finest culinary institute in the United States of America? And the kid through the Romeo Scholarship comes back to work in McKees Board? What had to do with that decision, Nate?
Honestly, I'm still in college, so I'm still living in the area at Penn State Grader Allegheny. So I was at that point just looking for a job in the school district and I was an hourly worker, I got hired at Founder's Hall as the kitchen manager. And I never said no to an opportunity, so that's how I've ended up where I am today.
Does the nutrition know what they have?
I would say so, yeah.
They don't have a clue. Come on, man.
So I have talked to Kelly a little bit and she has helped me as well going to college and everything and it's it's probably the perfect job, I've met more people here than when I was in school. So the relationships here, just being from McKees Board made it such an easy transition to grow professionally and also take everything that I learned here because I also did VOTech here at culinary. So I was part of our VOTech culinary program here for four years. Then went to culinary school and I was able to come back, so I still work with some of the staff over there as well in talking to students that are going to IUP's culinary school or anything like that.
So good to see you, thanks Nate.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, guys.
Real quick, I gotta ask you one question, at the beginning you said that parents were not sure or unable to get the information about what you guys are doing in in the building. So how are we communicating that out to to them so they can start getting this information to?
So this year, we've taken more focus on our Facebook and our Instagram pages. It's the nutrition group at McKees Board Area School District.
Okay.
So on there is where we have links to all of our school menus, is where our contact information is. And that's where we post these pictures that you see on the board reports, we post them online in real time.
Gotcha.
So rather than an end of the month recap, we do them in real time and we always try to post like we're having this coming up in the elementaries or if there's a change in menus as well, we try to make it aware on social media.
Are we doing anything, Mr. Molesby, if you can answer this, like to to highlight the stuff that they're doing on our social media? Or can we work on combining that so maybe we could maybe reach some more people to so they understand?
Of course, yeah, we'd be happy to share those highlights, I know that our PR account does from time to time, but if there's anything, you know, and especially that you want us to share, let us know, we'll be happy to do that as well.
And I've been in communication with her as well and we're working towards having just like a repost of everything that's on ours, that way parents can access our pages well and interact there.
Perfect, just trying to get the word out there, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah. Well.
I know this one potato day, you're gonna have sweet potatoes in here on this one day.
So potatoes include sweet potatoes as well. Yeah, so we have either baked sweet potatoes, we have rusted potatoes, french fries, tater tots, mashed potatoes. It's a wide variety of selections. That's why I was, yeah, there is, there is sweet potatoes there as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, another presentation, Osakpec, muesel, and wood, I hope I pronounced the names properly, I do good? I hope so.
Yeah, you did great.
Thank you. No, it is that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, now that we're all hungry from that presentation, this won't be as appetizing, I'm sure, so just boring numbers. So I'm, as you said, my name's Peter Van Cherry, I'm the audit partner on the engagement. Just had to put a brief summary together, the financial statements, so just on two pages instead of the hundred and hundred page report that's there. So the first letter you see in the report is our opinion letter, it's an unmodified opinion, it states that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So we're looking at the financial statements themselves, when we look at the balance sheet for the governmental funds, we're looking at the general funds, so the fund balance at the end of six thirty twenty-four combined is twenty-four million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Of that seventeen million, almost eighteen million is assigned. The assignments are for future capital projects of three million and then future budget shortfalls is the balance of the assignment. Your unassigned fund balance is six point five million dollars. So comparing that as a percentage to your total budgeted expenditures, you're at seven point six percent from that side there, overall, you're about twenty-eight percent. So from that standpoint, you're, you know, have a healthy fund balance, but you have, you know, money set aside for future shortfalls. Then looking at the revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, you can see your total revenue is ninety-four million, seventy thousand, expenditures before other financing uses, seventy-four million, three oh five. And then the other financing uses, the eleven million basically comes priced of transfers to the debt service fund to make your principal interest payments. And then two million that the board authorized to transfer to the capital project fund. So your change in fund balance for the year was a positive eight million dollars, meaning that your revenue exceeded your expenditures by eight million dollars. Then when you look at what you're budgeted, when you did the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, you budgeted to have a positive three million, almost four million dollars. So you can see there's a positive difference there from what you anticipated to what actually took place. Reasons, your revenues came in over budget, four point one million dollars as you can see. A lot of that came from like three categories, interest was a million dollars over budget, interest earnings, obviously with where the rates were and the amount of money you had to invest. The contribution from Dick's Sporting Goods was not budgeted, that was a million, one seventy-five. And then basic instructional subsidy compared to the budget was about two point three million dollars over budget from what was anticipated. In the audit report that you have a draft of or Joe does, it breaks all those variances down in the back there with the budget to actual. So looking at where your revenues came from, so really coming from four sources, local, state, federal, and then a small amount from other financing sources. As you can see, the large number, the local sources represent twenty-three point three percent of your expenses, or revenues, I'm sorry. State sixty-one percent, and then your federal this year fifteen point five percent. Now, that includes a lot of Esser money in there, which obviously you will not have going forward as the majority of that has already been expended through six thirty twenty-four. So you're gonna see that number will drop next year. Expenditures, you can see the breakdown there, instruction fifty-nine percent, support twenty-three percent. And then the other large one, the other financing uses is really transfers to other funds, that's the next largest category, just under fourteen percent. So you can see where some of those monies go from. The other fund you have, debt service fund, debt service fund, you pay principal and interest of nine point eight million dollars in the year. So that covered all your outstanding bonds and notes, principal and interest on those. The other fund we talk about is the food service fund. So from there, we look at the change in that position. So for this year, twenty-three, twenty-four was a positive hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. And last year was a positive five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So there's a bit of a change there with the differences in the rates that you're getting reimbursed and also the cost of food has gone up. The next section of the financial statements are the footnotes, so they go on for about fifty, sixty pages, just to point out a couple items in there. We always talk about the Peasars and the net pension liability, what your share of that net pension liability is. So at the end of six thirty twenty-four, it's seventy-four million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So that's just your share, you're paying what your annual required contributions are. So it's not like it's a true, it's a liability, but it's more of a paper liability as you pay your annual contributions. Long-term debt, so your total general obligation bonds I think at the end of the year, a hundred and seven million dollars. As I said earlier, you retire principal of six point one million dollars. So that's the various issues that are still out there. I also have a small general obligation note still out there, balance is nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars on the general obligation note. Then within the financial statements, they detail each issue and the balances that are due and then also discloses the principal and interest that's due until maturity. Couple other liabilities, you have compensated outstices, that's accrued sick days for various employees under the terms of their contract, that's a calculated liability. Lease liabilities and subscription liabilities, leases are like mainly for copiers, which is now recorded as a liability. And then subscription liabilities are subscription based information technology arrangements. So any technology arrangement you have, which is beyond twelve months, is considered a liability and untangible asset. So that's a new standard that was implemented last year. Then you also have some post-employment benefits through the district plans and also through Peasars. So those liabilities are reported there too. Then the last section is the single audit section, that's required, obviously you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds. So we're required to perform additional testing over those federal programs. So your total federal expenditures this year, seventeen million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. With the majority, you know, the majority of that, not majority, but a big chunk of that is the Essers funds that were that were expended in the year. So the summary of the audit results for the financial statements, we do report a material weakness in internal control over the financial statements. Mainly with the bank reconciliations and the review of the liabilities. We did have a funding last year on the special ed program that was resolved this year, so that funding is no longer reported there. So the two, the three programs we actually tested, this major programs were the Essers or the Education Stabilization Fund, the special ed cluster, which we were required to test since there was a funding on it last year, and also the Twenty First Century Program. So we did testing, more testing on those three programs under the requirements of the Single Audit Act. So that's a quick summary of their audit report, I don't know if anybody has any questions or wants to dive into anything more detailed.
Are you bringing the books, Pete, are the books here?
It's in draft form right now, but nothing's really gonna change, we're just waiting for some loose ends to clean up a couple letters and stuff. But the report that Joe has a draft of the whole thing, we'll get final, when we get the final pieces of information and get our testing.
And there's enough to make available to the public should they?
Well, yeah, I think we gave you twenty last year of the bound copies. And then Joe has a PDF of the draft of the whole financial statement also, so right as a number. Okay? All right, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing of citizens, honorable Cynthia Baldwin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three questions tonight, two for the new superintendent and one for whomever answers it, all right? And my my two questions for the new superintendent, first, congratulations, Mr. Van.
Thank you so much.
All right. What is your vision for the school district?
I mean, when you ask me about my vision off the, coming out of the top like that, first and foremost, to look at the students within this district and see what we can do to help them, not only prepare them for post-secondary education, but prepare them for the Twenty First Century workforce. What do I mean by that? Six to seven out of every ten new jobs in the next ten years are gonna be data related, digitally based, technology based. So when you ask me my vision, I look at that, what technology implementations can we make K through twelve over the next five years when I'm here and hopefully longer, if it works out that way? What can we do to prepare those kids for the next, you know, within the next five years, for the next umpteen years when it comes to technological improvements? So that's number one. Probably even more importantly is simply assisting these teachers with curriculum, instruction, and assessment measures that not necessarily mirror the PSSA and those Keystone tests, but they focus on those standards that are tested within each grade level and giving those teachers and parents alike examples of that as to what's gonna be tested. So not not only to help the teachers assist these kids more easily, but help the parents at home assist their children more easily. And I could go on and on with this for the next hour, but I'm gonna stop there.
We can have that offline, okay? But I'm glad to hear that your vision is about the students and their futures.
Thank you.
So that's very important. What do you see as your biggest challenges?
You know, I have to say, when you ask me about a challenge here, and I've only been here physically for the last four days and I can't say enough about the administrative staff, the professional staff, the support staff, every minute, everyone has been extremely kind and open to what I'm talking about. You know, I think probably the biggest challenge will be communicating with everybody for those goals that I just described, you know? Communication seems to be always the biggest challenge in every district I've been at. So if you were to ask me that, I would say right then and there, establishing methods of communication. And I don't necessarily mean it's easy to send an email or make a phone call, we can all do that. It's understanding each other's thought process and how.
Buy-in, you're talking about buy-in too.
Well, yeah, absolutely, you know, and a lot of that, another challenge with that communication, it's not just simply from me to the teachers and the administrators, it's from the teachers to the students and most importantly, and this is what everybody, or should I say sometimes people overlook, it's easy for teachers to communicate with students, but those students have to be geared towards communicating with the home. And then when that help, that help, that assistance, that assessment, that learning takes place at home, then it's communicated back from the parent or the guardian to the child, back to the teacher. And then when you got that, you really got something, now you got communication, once again, it's benefiting the children.
And and that's good, and and you weren't here, but a couple times ago, we had Spanish speaking parents here. So when we communicate, it's important that we communicate so that everybody is on board and we can help all the kids.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's very important. Okay, my third question is, when will Dr. Juanzo's picture be hung?
I can answer, I asked the same question, we had some admin hearings in here Monday morning and I think they said it just came in, correct? I asked the same question and they, fairly soon, I would imagine, they wanna do some work leveling these, I don't know if your OCD bothers you about the leveling, but I know it does me and Mr. Smith, so I know that it came in, I asked about it, it's been ordered, we have it. So maybe by the April meeting for sure. Yeah.
It'll be before the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, when I say April.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Harold out.
Just going to talk briefly about the basketball position. We had a young man, we have a young man in that position that does everything possible for the young men that are playing the sport. Not only teaching them as far as a term, but also educationally. The young man gives his heart and soul to the people, the players that he has and as much far as going, picking them up and taking them home and making sure they have stuff to eat and different things of that sort. I don't, nobody else is gonna come in here and do that. This young man is bred, was bred here in McKees Board, from McKees Board and the McKees Board troop. And he has these young men's hearts, I mean, he has that to his heart, he's taken to heart. So I was kinda shook up about it because, see, I'm here, this is the truth. I'm here, I come out here to these practices and I see how he practices these young men, we go over films and different things that they need to do so for the next opponent. opponent and for them to be prepared. And he does that. And then from the film, we go out to the basketball court and they practice over the situation so we be prepared for the game. Now, I don't, you're not gonna get anybody else in here that can will do that, I don't believe. I really don't. Because like I said, I'm here. It's not what somebody else told me. I'm here myself. I come here sometimes Sunday after church and he's got the guys out there practicing. I'm in here, still my suit, whatnot, because I believe in him. And I believe these young guy and these young guy. This is not only, like I said, sports, but it's life's work also, showing these young men how to be young men and how to move on. If they enough or they're lucky enough to get a scholarship or something of that sort, fine, and he helps them with that. But if they don't, they're prepared for life's work. We had, he bought in a program here called F Life. And it was in this area. It's new. And last year, we did was, we had tutoring session, we had food for them to eat, we bought in manage, we bought in coaches from different places and different players in here. Once again, not only the game, but also life was taught. And, you know, I'm just let asking his guys, let him at least finish out the senior year with his guys, all the sweat and tears he put in it. Like Director DeNada over there a couple years ago, he saw a young man walking up the street there and he had on crutches. He was coming to school. And he stopped and asked him, did he need a ride? Well, Troy does that daily. He does that daily. So, you know, and that's one of the reasons why Director DeNada gets elected all the time for the school board, because he cares about the kids and also the property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Roberta Way wired. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to discuss the dress code for the for the Keith sport school district. I was here last year about the exact same time and voiced my opinion about that and other things. And I'm the one that got fired for voicing my opinion at a school board meeting. I'm back. I got fired. Best thing they did for me. But I want to know, why are we still talking about the dress code? It's in black and white. I have a granddaughter who is in third grade up at Francis McClure. And last week, she wore a pair of jeans that had a little patch on it, a little slice right here, like all the kids are wearing these jeans, you know, have holes in them. She was told, don't ever wear those jeans again. That is against dress code policy. Yesterday, Francis McClure put out on their Facebook page, a copy of the dress code. It's in black and white. Guess what Trent Twin Rivers posts yesterday, today, probably continue. Many, many kids and many, many adult staff not in dress code. Why? I talked to you. Why are we still discussing this? Why can't this be fixed? Why? It's it's in black and white. Why? Why can't those people up at Twin Rivers? It seems like they do what they want. And you just don't do anything. We had the meeting about the Dick's Board for Francis McClure. When are we gonna see anything? Can anybody tell us that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I've been giving in my committee reports, the processes that we have. There will be an extensive report coming at next week's meeting. But they are in the design phase. There it's in a phased approach. There will be some things starting for next school year. I'll have a lot more information in my in my report.
Oh, I thought they were coming this year.
No, no, they are. You'll you'll be able to actually see. So this is the design year. So the process that this is, is there there's staff meetings, there's community meetings, there's a lot of input, and then all the information's taken. And then they need to see which programs we need to institute at McClure, because it's not going to be the same as.
And I ask you, why do you guys allow Twin Rivers to get everything and Francis McClure to get hardly nothing? Why? Why is that? Is it? Is it because of income? Is that the difference?
It really doesn't have anything to do anything to do with that. A lot of that stuff's been addressed. I know we keep talking about things in the past. And most of the things are moving on. There will be a much more extensive report coming next week. There's also a state of the partnership meeting coming up next week for members of the school board, that committee, and the school districts. We'll have a better understanding from there. I will have more answers for you regarding that.
But I want to know why the school board is not fighting for Francis McClure to get what Twin Rivers got.
If I can interject just for a second, please. I'm in total agreement with you with the dress code. I am one thousand percent behind the dress code.
So we shouldn't have to talk about this.
Right. And we shouldn't. And thankfully, we have a new superintendent, and he's already addressing that. And of course, you know, there's times you will have variances that need to be addressed. And we've got a gentleman right here and Mr. Rolzadet, and I'm with you one thousand percent when it comes to dress code. Now, to address the Francis McClure and the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation, we as a board, and I get it, I put a committee together, which is Mr. Keller, Mr. Pavlysek, and Mr. Shropion. The objective of that was to make sure that the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation is being brought throughout the district fairly, because it should be. It should be. And that's exactly where we're at. And I'm very happy to say that that's moving forward really well. And I'm excited to see what they do at McClure, because again, I will tell you, I am one thousand percent with you that both the schools, and of course, they're gonna then go into the other schools as well as time goes on. But like Mr. Pavlysek said, they're now in those planning stages up there. I think it's gonna be a great, I think it's gonna be a great opportunity.
I hope it is.
And I think with Dr. McGrann here, we are gonna do very well. I'm a big proponent of the dress code, huge, huge. Sorry, I just, I agree with. But so you know, we we are aware of it. We have acknowledged it. And these guys are doing a great job with the Dick's Sporting Goods. And they they bring that forward. As you just saw, Dick took we on a twin cash. And Dick's Sporting Goods wants that. They're doing a fabulous job. We just needed to get that pinpointed and put in the right direction. And we've got it there at this point.
I feel, and I suggested this to you, that the people with Dick's Sporting Goods are fighting. I want my my grandchildren to get what Twin Rivers did. And they all got Yetis. And they're like, it's a Yeti. Why are they fighting so hard not for Francis McClure not to get this stuff?
I don't think, if I may, I don't think that it was that Dick's did not want Francis McClure to get it. When the when the grant originally started from Dick's, it was just for that building and that for one building, because they only had so many resources. So it was for one building to start it there. And from the beginning, the commitment was, let's get one building started, and then we'll move across the district. And that's what Dick's is doing. You know, every year, there's putting more resources into the Keith sport, and it'll eventually be across the whole district.
Dick's needs understand that people in White Oak shop at Dick's also.
So, you know, I just wanted.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
Ma'am, this goes back to when we first engaged Dick's Corporation. Superintendent Mark Holzman was here. And the guarantees were a million dollars for a hundred years. That's that's what that commitment was. They identified neighborhoods that were had a need. And that's where they felt they wanted to put a substantial amount of their investment in, knowing all along that that would have to be evened out after a period of time. We're at that area where we're going to begin to assign those dollars across the school district. But in its inception, Dr. Holtzman and Dick's Dick's Corporation laid the seed for that to occur in those neighborhoods that were identified as with the greatest need. And that's simply how it happened. It didn't happen to ignore anyone else, because we knew this was an investment they were making over a very long period of time, and we didn't want to lean on.
Well, how could Twin Rivers need more when that was a brand new school?
Those neighborhoods have been identified at.
So it's the neighborhood, not the school.
Dick's looked at that, looked at the entire district and identified that as those kids needed a little bit more help to get them started. And God bless them for identifying. I'm not gonna go so far as to say it was conditional on us and Dick's getting there. But this group went out to view, under Dr. Holtzman, this view went out to view the LeBron James School in Ohio. And they got an idea on how to do this. Okay. And our administrators came back after accompanying our superintendent out there. Dr. Juanzo, I think, joined them for that. They she was the assistant at that time. The point was, they made, they saw what they needed to do, where the seed money should be invested. They came back here and they made their investment there all the time with the idea is that eventually we would have to, not not have to, but we would want to.
So in reality, it is based on income.
We we know the recognition of where most of their dollars are invested. But we're gonna even that up. And that's in the process right now. I'm sure that Jason can tell you the programs that we're going to address here. I'm sure the board president can. Very proud of their investment here. And when somebody's thrown one point one at you, you find a way to get along with them. You know, you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying. I totally get it.
Is it a perfect situation? No, I probably raise as many grievances as anybody. But by the same token, it's a very generous contribution and commitment. And I don't know what this school district would do without it.
And in reality, it was based on income.
Absolutely. The only thing I want to say to that is that, you know, there were a couple leadership changes with, you know, the superintendent, the principal at McClure a couple times that kind of delayed some of the some of the some of these actions. But we're moving forward. And like I said, I'll have more information at next board meeting. So I welcome you to attend it, to hear, if not in person, online.
Well, I think dress code thing needs to stop. My grandkids are being told, don't wear that. It needs to stop.
I'm fully confident that under Mr. McFann's leadership, we'll get that stuff taken care of.
And don't forget, this was around the time that Comcast gave us two thousand computers. This was the place to be. And it was as a result of Dr. Holtzman luring Dick's Corporation here. And and we were on Good Morning Today or something all over the nation on what was happening in the Keith sport area school. It was such a source of pride for the community. So all these good stuff was happening. And doggone it, how we manifested it and put it in and streamlined it across the eighty two million dollar school district was a test. But as long as we're making those people happy and they're they're satisfied with their investment here, I think we're on a good, I think we're on a good trail.
And if I can interject for you, obviously, we keep talking about Dr. Holtzman, and I am very proud to say I'm his father. And the Dick's Sport, I was not on the school board, but the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation information come up. And I do, I discuss with him, as I do my other son, whatever is going on. And I can tell you, when he was here, and this is a fact, he already had in place to implement Francis McClure and Twin Rivers at the same time. Unfortunately, he moved on with his career, and we had some changes here or there. So something somewhere, I don't want to say it got lost in the walk, but I can tell you right now, that's why that committee was put together with these gentlemen, and they've got it on track. And I think it's gonna be exciting. I think it's gonna be great. And I think you'll like the end product of that. And I think you're gonna like the end product, though, with the dress code as well.
I hope so.
Thank you so much.
And the only reason why I know what Trent Twin Rivers got, I worked there, I saw it all coming in. I can't tell you what's going on now. I have no clue. But I saw all that.
I understand. I understand. Thank you so very much. Jeffrey Blackwell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jeffrey Blackwell. My like, I'm a Keith supporter. I'm also a Vietnam veteran, Arab veteran. And I wasn't Vietnam, legally blind right now. And my son been coaching football, basketball. He been a life on the Keith sport all his life. And he loved the Keith sport, and he loved the children. I don't think it's right what they doing him. As they fair, and he gave their heart and soul to him right now, today, he probably die for one of those children, all of them. I think they ought to do right by him. Thank you. That's all I have to say, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay.
You know, you mark, you know, too. Your son.
I know very absolutely. You and I go way back. You and I go way back, Jeff.
Your son was like my son.
Yes, absolutely.
There wasn't no, no awful crap, straight up. I'm a veteran, and I try to be a true Keith supporter, like I always been, so has he.
Absolutely.
Ain't no BS behind us. Straight up good people. We tried to be.
Board matters approval of policy. We seek a motion to vote on all of March thirteen two thousand twenty five agenda items marked four point two through four point four by consent. Number five, curriculum, special education. We seek a motion. I lost my place. We seek a motion to vote on all of the March thirteen two thousand twenty five agenda items five point three two through five point four by consent. Number six, technology, safety and security. We seek a motion to vote all of the March thirteen two thousand twenty five agenda items six point two through six point three by consent.
Mr. President, can I just let the public know there was a typo there on the Chromebooks? The technology department has done a lot of good in repurposing some of the ones that we have. So we do not need twenty nine hundred. We're looking for three hundred. So significant difference there. I apologize. That'll be fixed up next week.
Okay. Thank you. Number seven, facilities, food service and transportation. We seek a motion to vote all of the March thirteen two thousand twenty five agenda items seven point through two through seven point thirteen by consent.
Mr. President, I just want to touch on some items that are under section seven. There's a bunch of upgrades on here regarding our school's HVAC systems coming out of capital. Currently, those systems are running like a version two point O, no longer supported. The lowest supporting level of those systems is a is a version five, and the current versions are thirteen. So we need to get updated controls so we're able to better control our HVAC. There's a couple things on here that seven point twelve, the volleyball camp, that should have said funds not to exceed three thousand dollars. And the volleyball clinic of funds not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. Also, the purchase of a boom truck for the maintenance department, that'll be the electrician's regularly driven vehicle. We had budgeted this year seventy five thousand dollars for vehicle replacement. We were able to get a used boom truck, which is in significantly good shape for a cost of forty two five. This is actually gonna probably end up in over time, saving us a lot of money, because we're spending close to fifteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars yearly on runnings of lifts, et cetera, which will no longer be needed. And that is it. That's all I want to touch on. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any legal matters or contracts. Number nine, finance. We seek a motion to vote all of the March thirteen two thousand twenty five agenda items nine point two through nine point six by consent. Number ten, other action item. Number ten point one, resolution, student discipline, board action to approve resolution fourteen twenty one, fourteen twenty two, fourteen twenty three, fourteen twenty four, and fourteen twenty five student discipline. Number eleven, personnel, board action to approve the personnel recommendation to green sheet. Eleven point two, athletic trainer substitutes, board action to approve Rachel Castro and Cara De Salvo as substitute athletic trainers at a rate of fifty dollars an hour to be called upon at the discretion of administration to cover athletic events on high volume days.
Just want to touch on that real quick, Mr. President. That is just, that is just for days. We only have one athletic trainer. That is for days. We have multiple events going on, especially in the spring, where we're going to be spread out with baseball, softball, track, and making it easier for our trainer and all of our student athletes to have coverage, as well in the event that we would ever have any call offs by our current athletic trainer, Mr. Moore, who needs to be able to cover. The administration would just call people in, and they would just be paid as at an hourly rate for the time that they were here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Number twelve, something under business management. Number thirteen, motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. We'll see you next week, Thursday, Saint.